I'll start out by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Tom Guston. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for this opportunity to come to serve the community tonight. I pray for wisdom for this group of dedicated people. I pray, Lord, that you would open their eyes to the subtleties of the problems that they need to solve. God, I pray that there would be unity among them tonight and that all things would be done to the glory of God in the name of Jesus. I pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay. Thank you, Marie.
You're okay?
Anderson?
Here.
Guston?
Here.
Closeau?
Here.
I am also here.
Here. All right. We had some changes that were made to the minutes at the last second, and so I would like for the minutes to be read tonight. The most updated version.
Is that necessary since we all have a copy of it?
Did you get the new copy that came out a few hours ago?
Yep, I got it copied up.
Right.
From what I understand, too, I talked with Luke Barrett, that the minutes have to be amended on record, that any amendment to the last two meetings' minutes has to be done on record.
Well, according to aim, we can send a draft out two or three days prior to the meeting and with getting the votes and then voting on the final on the next meeting.
Okay, this was the public access counselor that I talked with just a little bit ago, got an email from, and he said, do you want me to read this? Do you want me to read what he said?
I'd like to hear it.
Okay. Okay, I asked, can city council minutes be amended off record or prior to a meeting being on record? And his response was, anything that requires the majority of the council to effectuate needs has to happen in a public meeting.
So, yes, that is 100% true. However, these minutes have not been approved yet. They're being submitted for approval.
I don't have any. No, he said that amended minutes, you can't do it off record.
Well, he's 100% correct, but these minutes have yet to be approved, so they wouldn't necessarily be being amended yet. It's recommending a change to the minutes as presented is what would need to happen, and that would need to be voted on.
He goes on to say, okay, let me read it again. Anything that requires majority of the council to effectuate needs to happen in a public meeting if the minutes resolution have already been approved. Okay, you're right. I have not seen the amended minutes.
I haven't.
I haven't seen them either.
They were all sent to you and...
I know, but you can't just send it to us a few hours before the meeting. Some of us are working. Only one person has to ask for the minutes to be read according to Robert's Rule of Order, and the minutes have to be read.
That's fine. A second.
You ready?
Yep.
Are these the amended ones or...?
Nothing was amended. There was some comments edited, changed. Steve asked for a certain thing to be deleted. Pat asked some things to be rearranged. There was some spelling corrected.
Right, the council hasn't formally voted on...
You haven't formally voted, so nothing's been...
But these are a different set of minutes than were sent to us a couple days ago when we got our agenda. These were put out a couple hours ago, and you haven't seen them. Kathleen hasn't seen them. I haven't seen them. So, just to do things the right way, I would like to have them read. I don't think that's that big of a deal.
But that's my question. Are these the ones that's been edited?
The ones I have here are the ones that have the corrections in, correct.
Okay.
I wouldn't necessarily say that they're corrected versions, just the final version.
This is the final draft. This is the final draft.
Okay.
Dustin, just to double check, so you're saying it is okay for council members to read the initial minutes that are put out, make changes, send those to Susan? That's okay to do when we're not in a meeting?
So, a council member can recommend changes directly to Susan? Susan can make those. Now, the council can't gather themselves and say, hey, do you guys agree we need to change this? Now, that would be taking formal action outside of a public meeting. Say, if Steve said, hey, Susan, I would like to see this removed, I don't think it accurately reflects the meeting, she could then remove that. However, ultimately, the council has to approve the minutes.
So, I apologize because I misunderstood.
So, you're fine.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready.
Reading and correcting the general minutes, regular meeting on May 3, 2021. Motion to accept the minutes with a partial deletion of a statement made by Councilman Ramsey at 23 minutes 14 seconds to 23 minutes 21 seconds in the meeting on April 5, 2021 was made by Wolf, seconded by Closeau. Roll call vote taken with seven As, no nays. Motion carried. Can everybody hear me? Council Liaison Communications, Patricia Russell. The utility boards met on May 5 to May 19 at 4:00 p.m. at the pre-utility building. There was bad debt write-offs from October 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020, $31,553.62. There was abnormally high due to COVID pandemic. Bad debts, COVID should have I. Why it didn't say the N, I don't know. C-O-V-I-D.
Okay.
Bad debts are most extremely high or possibly recouped when a customer reestablishes service. Materials and supplies are becoming more difficult to obtain due to the pandemic. Example, conductor wire was quoted at six to nine and a half months to receive. There is also a chlorine supply shortages, and the costs will be going up. Thankfully, the company that supplies it was able to offer a special. On a positive note, the third quarter 2021 electric tracker rate decreased and will be passed on. Peru Planning Commission met on May 25 at 6:00 p.m. in the common council room. On the agenda was the vacating portion at Daro Street. It was tabled for further investigation. Peru Civic Center Committee met on May 8 at 9:30 a.m. at the center. On the agenda was a job title change from an event coordinator to event host. At this time, we have one person in the position on advertising for more people. The job is listed on the Peru website. We have a new committee member. Her name is Natalie Jackson, and she is a new member of our community. She has past experience with catering. Thank you, Pete, for inviting her. There was an event called Meet the Mayor in the planning stage to be held at the Civic Center. A date was not set at this time. The details will be forthcoming. Aviation Board, Patricia was unable to attend the meeting for the Aviation Board on May 11. She was at an appointment in Indianapolis with her doctor.
Excuse me. When she's, when it says I was at an appointment...
I know, I should change that, shouldn't I?
Yeah. I'm sorry, it's not, I just wanted, yeah, it's not a big deal.
I just saw that. These are directly from her notes.
Okay.
I don't think you should take the minutes directly from her notes. You need to take it from what's said because you might not say things. That's what happened the week prior. You took some things from Mr. Ramsey's notes that he didn't actually say.
Yeah, Patricia, though, she actually read that. So, when she submitted it to me, she said that's what she read, correct, Patricia?
And from now on, I'm going to do an abridged submission.
Okay. Let's see, but please don't forget the pre-ministerial airport. Hang on. Okay, when I reprinted those out, I messed up on the pages.
It was the open house.
Huh?
It's just the open house.
Yeah, I'm trying to find you. Okay, the open house on July 31. From 11 a.m. to 4 p.m., there was food, news, day airplane rides, and the Huey Organization will be offering helicopter rides. Mark Ramsey, the county commissioners pledged $1.4 million to help fund a major expansion of high-speed internet to rural parts of Miami County. Money goes to Miami-Cast County RMC for Broadway broadband. There are three dogs at the animal control. Thanks to Molly Grant and Sheriff Hunter, talking about 911 with over 15,000 logged in five months. Six departments at the sheriff building. The Cole Porter Festival is June 10 through 13. July 4 is on Sunday. Be careful with fireworks. Miami County 4-H Fair is June 20 to 27. Thanks to the street department for cutting down streets, trees that need to be cut down with the walnut tree on the corner of Grand and State Road, 19th South. Kathleen Closeau said that the future growth would be presented in communication so as not to violate open door policy. Betsy Wolf reported that in a board of works, a proposal by Microkeeper to use city equipment was tabled last meeting to be brought up again at tomorrow night's meeting. Steve Anderson had none. Pete Sahadashini reported at the Miami County Council meeting on this Tuesday, May 18, 2021, had two money appropriation transfers. One transfer was for the Clerks Perpetuation Fund in the Amalea 1500 and 2,000 in seat at Area 5 guardianship. Tom Guston had none. For unfinished business because the adoption vote for the additional appropriation ordinance 521 was brought back. The motion to adopt was made by Tom Guston, seconded by Steve Anderson. Roll call vote was taken with seven As recorded and zero nays. Motion carried. In new business, city approved common council ordinance 132021, and ordinance creating the COVID SDGB Phase III fund was brought up with Chairman Wolf asking for a motion to consider. Motion to consider was made by Anderson, seconded by Closeau. Debbie Wallach and Rachel from United Way stepped forward to explain the fund was necessary to be able to administer the grant money coming to the city and being dispersed back to the United Way. Motion was then made by Ramsey to adopt the ordinance, seconded by Guston. Roll call vote was taken with seven As and zero nays. Motion carried.
Excuse me, just, I'm sorry, Susan. Is there somebody...
It's gotta be one of the fans.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Not mine. Mine's battery powered. Yours is playing.
I don't have ideas. Something's interfering up there. I don't know.
It's my irrigates.
Next order of business was Resolution June 10, 2021. The resolution established a rate tracking factor for the municipal electric utility of the city of Peru, Indiana. Motion to consider was made by Sahadashini, seconded by Anderson. Josh Chance, General Manager of Utilities, stepped forward to inform the council that the rate of electricity on the residential side decreased by 16 cents. In comparing the rate, the energy cost for 1,000 kilowatts was $139.69 or 27% higher than Peru. Heartland was $134.87 per 1,000 kilowatts or 23% higher. RMC Cast was $144.55 per 1,000 kilowatts or 31% higher. The motion was made by Russell to adopt the resolution, seconded by Ramsey. Roll call vote was taken with seven As and zero nays. Motion carried. Okay. Now, I got to figure out which page I'm on next.
Next order. Next order.
Okay. Well, that's where I'm at, anyway. I got resigned from receipt. Uh-oh, I'm missing a page. I got two pages that says resigned from receipt where I copied. What's the next page it starts with?
Next order. Next order of business.
I've got communications and communications. Okay, I'm missing that page.
Do you want mine? And I can look off of Betsy's.
Yeah. Yours is yours because for some reason...
Oh, yeah, I have the old one.
Recopying that page. I've missed...
Somebody have to...
Missed the page and recopy. Tom, you have a new one? Tom?
I don't know what the right thing to do.
Do you have the new copy of the minutes?
I sure do. They're on my kitchen table. Sorry. Should be right here. These are the old ones.
Do you have a new copy?
Do you want it?
Mark? Do you have a new copy of the...
You have a new copy, Mark?
Is that the new one from today, from three hours ago?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Did this page change at all?
The only thing that changed was Steve's statement.
Steve, did you have that page?
That's on that page.
His is on the next page on, it'll be on this page because Heather Mizillo's...
It's on this page.
Yeah, Heather Mizillo.
Yeah, it's right below that.
Yeah.
Do you want to move on with the, could we move on with the meeting and come back to that? She could print out a new copy or...
We could table it, vote the table, and then come back.
Come back later today or...
Yeah. Later to this meeting or table to the next meeting.
I move, we table this to the next meeting?
I disagree. I'm sorry. Because I've got, I've got some things that, because I've got some things that need to be discussed this meeting.
You want her to go upstairs and print a new copy?
She should come with the copy of the most recent...
Well, the only other option we have is for her to go upstairs and print a new copy. When I printed the new copy out, apparently, I missed.
I think we should table it to the end of the meeting and come back to it. And she, we can give her time to go do that, and then everybody doesn't have to sit and listen through all this. They can get through what they want, and then they can leave.
I agree. I second that.
I'll make a motion that we table the approval of the minutes until the end of this meeting.
I second that. Wolf?
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
No.
Closeau?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Sahadashini?
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
Motion.
Okay, so how are you going to read it then?
How are we going to do this then?
Just going to go, we're going to halt the meeting right here, and you're going to go...
Do you want me to go up and get them real quick? That's the option. Yeah?
I don't know what else.
Tom, can you turn your fan off?
I'm sorry.
Can you turn your fan off? We're getting some feedback. There you go. Problem solved.
You can turn the other fan back on then.
No, I think, I think it makes a huge amount of noise.
There you go.
Sorry, folks.
Can we plug this one back in?
I would.
No?
You can try it, but I think it makes a lot of noise.
Give it another second chance, Steve.
I don't have any. We only had one probe.
I just think it would've been so easy just to table it, and we could've gotten everything else done. I think it was the other one making all the noise. Next story of business brought forward, the city council appointee for the library board, Mary Ann Farnum. On behalf of the board, requested new council appointee to replace Auguste Reed, who had resigned from her seat a few months earlier. Regina Medel submitted a letter to the council as a person interested in filling the vacancy. The motion to appoint Regina to the library board was made by Guston, seconded by Wolf. Roll call vote was taken, seven As, zero nays. Motion carried. Linda Johnson, Director of Area 5 Adult Guardianship, VASA, voluntary applicants for seniors and incapacitated adults, presented an update to the council mayor. Also, notification update of budget needs for 2022. Approval now or in the fall? Linda explained the program was similar to the Castle program for children and served the counties of Howard, Tipton, Cass, Miami, and Fulton. The program was initiated to serve the most vulnerable at-risk population, and COVID had prevented them from being able to do so as much as needed. The story of a mom and son from Peru was brought up as an example of a recent case that they were involved in helping with. The home was condemned and would be signed over to the city from the agency who took possession of it after rescuing the mom and son. The mom was in a facility and doing well with the son, finally being placed in a group home he was able to adjust to. The program rounds off grant money and gets no money from Area 5. Linda would like to have a pledge letter in the amount of $5,000 from the county council, city council, and mayor around September, October this year. Linda would hope to get about $125,000 from the five counties and would be able to get a match up to $75,000 from the Supreme Court grant she's applying for this year. She also asked for an attorney who would work pro bono for cases in Miami County as they have no one available to do this here yet. She stated she would be contracting, contacting the mayor and council back in the fall for a pledge, hopefully. Heather Mizillo stepped forward and presented the council with pictures of flags that were flying around her neighborhood with an obscene word on them. She was asking council if there was a way to have an update on the city ordinance to help regulate this from happening. Council agreed they would, something should be done, legally unsure what path they could take direct by this problem. Council asked the city attorney if he knew how they could legally stop this. Dustin Kern, the city attorney, looked up state and federal regulations on signs and flags. It was stated the signs could be regulated somewhat, whereas flags could not, as it would be an infringement of the freedom of speech by federal laws. Betsy said she heard that the mayor of Manchester had a similar problem, and she would get the name of the attorney that Dustin had spoken with to see how they were handling the situation in their city. Steve Anderson said he was going to look into what other cities were doing to see if this, if there was something the city could change. The council said they would look into this further, and she could contact them to see what they find out. Communications. Debbie Wallach from United Way stepped forward to update council on the second kiosk that was placed this month. Adam in the street department and Chris Houseley from Stowe Storage was given thanks for installing kiosks. She said a third kiosk would be placed that weighs management district next. Mayor Hewitt stated that about 250 pounds of needles have been collected from the first kiosk. Debbie also informed the council that the United Way kickoff is August 21, 2021, from 5:30, 7:30 at the Toll House with the ducky run plan. The ducks will be $5 apiece. Stephanie Graff stepped forward to inform the council and the public that a Juneteenth event is being planned in McConacall Park on June 19, 2021. All the proceeds from the event will go into establishing Lily's house. The mayor has been invited to help come kickoff the event, which is started at 12 and go into about 8 p.m. on the 19th. The Lieutenant Governor Suzanne Crouch has accepted the invitation to be at the event. Jefferson Street BBQ will cater the event from 12 to 3 p.m. There will be a band playing between the hours of 4 to 8. The cost of tickets is $20 for adults, $10 for children. There will be a scholarship offered to families with more than one child to help with the cost of the other children. Or if a family or individual cannot afford to attend, there will be a scholarship available for them. There will be a bouncy house, snow cones, and cotton candy. Hopefully, those from leadership will show up and support the event. Kathleen listed the names of several people she wanted to be voted in the future approved committee she and Peter Curly liaisons for. Dustin Kern, city attorney, asked Kathleen if the committee had been formed by the mayor by council. After a discussion, which it was determined it was not clear who had formed this committee, before proceeding to vote on the people to join this committee, it was decided that that question needed to be answered. Kathleen said she would look into this further and do her research to bring the answer.
May I? Never mind. Yeah, I'm sorry, never mind.
Then you can go back and do corrections.
That's right. I apologize.
Kathleen went on to say that a four-year request to hers requesting information from the four-year requests of Matthew Jelenek have been denied. She said she had only gotten a couple of things so far and would be filing charges tomorrow. Dustin, city attorney, tried once again to offer an explanation of what was expected and what had been provided. Kathleen stated she asked for the original request from Jelenek and the letter sent to department heads. All she received was the original request. As there was no letter sent to the department heads, just the requests forwarded to them, she had in fact gotten what she requested. Mark Ramsey stated that he was hoping that the council would be able to start working together in the future to benefit the city of Peru and not themselves. He also requested that any information sent from council members to other council members be sent to him as well in a timely manner. He stated that at the veterans ceremony on the weekend, only him and the mayor were in attendance. Mark also expressed his concern on only a few council members attending the board members' meetings for their liaison assignments. Ramsey reminded people that the Cole Porter was June 10 through 13. Here in market, it's good to see the kids out and about for summer. Miami County Fair is June 2027 this year. Thanks to Molly Grant and Sheriff Hunter for taking me, which should be taking him, around the 19911 facility at the sheriff's office. They've had 1,000 calls logged in the first five minutes. If you want to go out and see what our tax money is going for, they will take you around. Thanks to the street department for cutting down trees that need to be cut down, especially trees on my corner. Betsy brought up the CCMG as to why the city was getting it. She stated the mayor had explained in a meeting that it had been completed but failed in the submission. The mayor determined that the only loss was in time, as the project will be delayed. It was brought out that it would be applied for again this year in July. Mayor Hewitt said it would be the plan this year to have paved Abraham Lane and all the graveled alleys. Diane from the audience asked if they knew when the lines on Main Street would be painted. She said it was hard to see any lines. It darkened, made it hard to know where the lines were. Mayor Hewitt said they've been working on painting lines, but rain slowed it down. He would check and see if those lines were getting painted soon. Tom Guston made the motion to adjourn, with Steve Anderson seconding the motion, offset eye, and meeting was adjourned.
Do we amend now or during communications? I mean, no, like, no.
No, you would, if there's an amendment, you'd now add, you would now...
If there's an amendment, you'd now ask that the minutes be...
Corrected.
Corrected to reflect that change, yeah. And then a final vote.
Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes?
I have some responses, but...
If, do you have anything that you want corrected? If not, you could...
Yeah, oh, you save that for communications, right?
Okay, so we don't have any corrections to the minutes. I will make a motion that we accept the minutes as read.
Anderson.
Yes, sorry.
Guston.
Yes.
Closo.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes. Okay, moving on to council liaison communications. Pat, do you want to go first?
Sure. I've got planning commission. We met on June 29th at 6:00 p.m. in City Hall. Will we be voting tonight on the vacation of two different streets? The aviation board, we met on June 8th and June 29th at the Peru Municipal Airport at 7:00 p.m. The main topic is the open house on July 31st from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There will be airplane rides, the UE organization, the circus band, food, drinks, and games. The meeting on the 29th was to initiate hiring a new engineer for the airport. The utility board met on June 2nd and June 16th at 4:00 p.m. at the utility building. I would like to recognize two city employees that were above and beyond. They helped rescue children on State Road 19 in an accident. Their names are Grant, Cade, and John Heilman. Thank you for making your city proud. I would like to mention that our electricity supplier invited the utility board, the city council, the clerk treasurer, and the mayor to their headquarters to present to us their ideas for their future and provided a very wonderful dinner on the 28th. That's INPA. And then the civic center committee met on June 19th at 9:30 at the civic center. We decided to start meeting on the last Saturday of the month at 9:30 a.m. at the civic center. If it is booked, we will move to the city hall. We are skipping July, and due to open door laws, the meetings are now open to the public and posted. We have three hosts available for events. The contracts are available at City Hall. The website is up and running. The Facebook page is up and running. The only change to rates were to add a $20 per hour fee for going over your allotted time you book. The $30 yearly fee and $10 an hour for nonprofits changed from meeting at least six months a year to meeting quarterly. And that's all I've got.
Mr. Ramsey, do you have anything to report?
The animal control has three dogs, and they are looking for their owner. And the dog park is doing great at this particular time. The work on East Main Street is coming along nicely. And also, the Peru Municipal Golf Course is doing their weekly duties, looking to get some drainage fixed on the course. They need some sprinkler heads and fittings. The disc golf is also about 85% done and designed. Karts are due hopefully by the first week of August, and they got several tournaments coming up later this summer. County Road 300 North is being paved this past week, so be careful with that. Looking for the business that paved the, from east of the Riverview Funeral Home to Broadway. It's breaking up in a lot of rough places and also trying to find out who's responsible to clean up the Riverwalk with cement slabs, limbs, and some other situations there at the Riverwalk. The cleanup illegal dumping is a new program that will take place shortly, hopefully. The Miami County Council will vote on that particular program, and they will also vote next Tuesday on the major expansion of the high internet to the rural and parts of Miami County. That will come up on next Tuesday. This is the Broadway broadband to help underserved students with the low income and install it over the next six years. 800 miles of vibrant internet. Miami County will be receiving the money which purchased by the internet. Also, don't forget the Peru Amateur Circus begins next week.
Friday, this Friday?
Kathleen, you try.
Okay, the Future Growth and Sustainability Committee met on the 14th. We had Stina Reed and Vincent Edmonds come and talk to us about the Marie Stuart Edwards statue and the ongoing pathway that's going to happen there and that it's going to be unveiling is October, August 26th. I apologize. And then we meet again this coming Monday, the 19th. So I met with, the abatement committee met with Brooke. That's at the county building on the 28th. We passed those kind of things, went through those. And then I just had another meeting, Tom and I just had another meeting this afternoon with the abatement committee at county building. So, thank you.
Great. I have nothing to report on my committees.
I don't have nothing to report.
I have the Miami County Council information from the June 15th meeting in the girl room. Mark, I'm not sure if you mentioned the amount that was, from the ARP funds was appropriate for the broadband was in the amount of $1.4 million on that. And then we have the salary ordinance amendment for part-time bridge crew was set at $20 an hour. They reviewed the dumping program recommended by BOC. Review request from planning commission for new software presentation was given by Corey Roser. And then the planning commission transfer from travel to attorney fees. And that's all I have.
I have no reports from committee, but I'd like to reinforce what Mark said, that next week starts Circus Week. And let's get out and support them. We have some great kids doing some things that are unbelievable.
Pretty amazing.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. There's none. New business, we'd like to welcome Jim Tid. He's going to present, be presenting a financial agreement between the City Square LLC and the City of Porto. Oh, you want Joe? Is Joe doing that?
Well, Joe's doing the report on the...
Okay.
But I can go ahead and...
Jim, I'll be right back. I know what you're going to say.
Okay. I thought, boy, tough crowd. The one thing, I'm chairperson, not sure what's appropriate. I had also, and I apologize for last minute notice, is this support letter on the KC46 project. And I, I didn't know when was the appropriate time to amend the agenda. I understood because this was being signed. We're asking you to consider this. We needed to amend the agenda. I don't know, should we do that before we get too much further? Or can we wait until the agenda, when this comes up? Okay.
I signed it and passed it down.
Okay.
You'll go down it.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. First of all, let me recognize Joe Monalax, who is here in the audience. Joe serves as, serves as the chairperson for the Peru Economic Development Commission. And that is a three-member commission that was established for the city to evaluate certain types of incentives, especially when there is the use of tax incremental financing or TIF dollars being proposed. So that group met at 5:30 through an advertised meeting here in this facility. We did have all three members, including Mr. Guston, who represents the city council at that meeting. The purpose of that meeting was to look at the documentation that you're, we're going to ask you to consider tonight and hopefully approve. That meaning a financing agreement, what's called a conditional project expenditure agreement, and actually passing a city ordinance, ordinance number 14, which is going to assist with an incentive to help with the reuse and rehabilitation of 1, 3, 5, and 7 South Broadway. So that commission met. They solicited questions from the public. Those questions were addressed. They passed a resolution, 7-12-21, saying that their recommendation is the city council will support that. Mr. Monalax has a copy of the report and the findings of those meetings to present to the council. And that is basically looking at the necessity for this type of incentive, the need for this type of incentive, the benefit that this will bring to the community, anticipated job creation, and those kind of things are certain factors that the Economic Development Commission needs to consider. And so, again, they passed the resolution, and that's kind of a summation of the report. Joe, anything else you want to add? Just about the amount of the taxes. Yeah. So what is being proposed and what the authority is recommending is consistent with what Miami County Economic Development Authority had considered and passed a couple of months ago. And that is a 70% reimbursement of the taxes, real property taxes, that are paid on the incremental assessed value that's associated with that building as improvements are made for each year for a period of 15 years. The documentation that you have for you that we're asking for your consideration tonight includes, and I'll start off with the financing agreement, just a quick overview. That lays out the process by which the reimbursement will occur. And again, this is totally based on the taxes that they pay. So again, there is, if there's no taxes that are paid, there's no reimbursement. And these taxes are based on the incremental assessed value. So the current, what's called the base assessed value that exists now on the building that existed when Dr. Stronger owned the building, those will continue to come to the, to the city and to the taxing units. The only thing that this agreement captures in this incentive is those future taxes that are made on the increase in assessed value. Whatever was the existing taxes will continue to come to the city. So once those taxes are paid twice a year, they're deposited into the tax incremental financing allocation fund. We're required by this financing agreement to actually compute 70% of whatever that increase in assessed value or taxes are paid on that increase and then reimburse City Square LLC. And again, I should go back and identify that this is agreement with a group of investors that are City Square LLC. They are properly formed within the state of Indiana as a limited liability company. Their main investors include Chad Patterson, that has DreamWorks, who's also involved in Seven Pillars. You have Dave Van Valen, who is, of course, an investor in the community. And then also Richie Day, who has Days Heating and Cooling, but both his daughter and wife are operating Two Days for the Peak currently in the first floor of that facility. So the financing agreement basically lays out the process. The next document that I would refer to...
Jim, may I ask a question, please? Now, this is for real property, not personal.
Yeah, this is, yes. Out of our TIFs, and that's the thing that separates us different than some of the other communities. A lot of communities, when they establish what's called TIF, tax incremental financing, will do it both on real and personal property. We made the decision years ago when we were establishing these that it would be real property only, and the personal property would be subject to abatement if you so saw fit. But personal property taxes would go to the taxing units.
Okay.
Okay, so this only involves real, the increase in assessed values that relates to real property taxes.
Thank you.
The conditional project expenditure is kind of in the form of a note or a bond. This is the obligation. If they wanted to, they could take this agreement and use it as collateral for a loan, if that's what they wanted to do. So this kind of actually is the note or the bond. Again, I would point you to the second page, kind of in the middle of the paragraph, that is highlighted and bolded, that this agreement shall not represent or constitute a debt of the city, the state of Indiana, or any political subdivision or taxing authority thereof. So again, if they don't pay their taxes, there's no reimbursement required. And there's no obligation on the city's part at all whatsoever. The last thing that I would ask for you to consider tonight, and each one of these documents require, once, if you approve each one of them, will require both the mayor and the clerk treasurer's signatures on them as what was passed in this particular council meeting. The last is ordinance number 14. And this document basically just takes everything that I said about the conditional project expenditure agreement, financing agreement, and puts it into the results of the public hearing from the redevelopment, or the Economic Development Commission, and puts it into a document and directs, in this particular case, if you approve it, directs the mayor to go ahead and issue out of the closing documents, which include the expenditure agreement and the financing agreement. So with that, Dustin, I don't know if I left out anything or if I covered it appropriately.
I think you accurately summarized the process of what needs to go on. You're there.
It's very similar to what you've done in other developments, including the commercial building out on Broadway, Seven Pillars. And yeah, I think those are the, the other two that come to mind. So this is a very similar process. Be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay, are we ready to consider it?
Well, before we do that, I move we, I move we accept the two agreements. The financial agreement and the conditional project expenditure agreement. I think we, we need to accept those.
I would defer to council whether you can do it all in one.
Can we do it all in one?
You want to take each one of them separately.
I think they need to be done separately. You can't make a vote on multiple topics in one motion.
I move we accept the financial agreement.
Second.
Is that Mark?
Mark.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sahadashini?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
I move we accept the conditional project expenditure agreement.
I second that one.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sahadashini?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
I move we consider ordinance 14-2021.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sahadashini?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
I move we adopt ordinance 14-2021.
I'd like to read the ordinance first. Before we start just adopting. Ordinance 14-2021, an ordinance authorizing the entering into of a conditional project expenditure agreement of the City of Peru, Indiana, City Square LLC, and the disposition of the proceeds thereof to City Square LLC and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto. respect thereto.
Thank you. Now we can move to adopt. I was just going to say, is there any discussion on that? No one has anything? Okay, then. Okay. Pat makes a motion to adopt. Does somebody want to make a second?
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahadashini?
Yes.
And Wal?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your consideration and support. Hopefully you can see some improvements that have been made to the building, but we look forward to a lot more that are going to be made on the inside of the building and turn that into a true asset for the city.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks for all the hard work, Jim.
Oh, and Susan has all of the...
Do you want to amend the agenda to add this?
Well, I want to do other business for, or you want me to cover this one?
You might as well cover it now.
Okay.
So there needs to be a motion to amend the agenda to consider?
I propose we amend the agenda to consider, to adopt. Do I consider or do we adopt? Just, no, amend the agenda. How do I word it?
Because it's not a mo, it's not a resolution. Was it?
It'd be to approve a letter of support regarding the KC-46 project at Grissom to send to the Secretary of the Air Force on behalf of the city.
So we're just amending? How do we do that?
You just make a motion to amend the agenda.
I make a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll second. Either of us. Second.
What this is...
Hold on, you have a moment.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahadashini?
Yes.
And Wal?
Yes.
What this is, the background, of course, you've probably read in the papers and such that Grissom is one of six bases being considered for the new KC-46 tanker aircraft. We are in competition with two bases in California, one in Oklahoma, one in Maryland, and one in New York. And this is a very competitive project, a significant amount of economic impact that will be associated with this new aircraft. The big carrot, of course, is 175 active duty people to be assigned to Grissom and their families. So again, it's not the team. I don't want to start because there's still a rumor out there they deactive duty is coming back. It's not, it's still going to be a reserve base. But in this particular case, 175, a squadron of active duty, about 175 people would be coming in, and under what's called an associate squadron. So what happens is, an active duty air crew flies that airplane one day, and the active duty air, or maintenance folks maintain that aircraft. The next day, an Air Force Reserve crew would fly it and be maintained by an Air Force. So they're sharing the asset in that case, the KC-46s. Part of the evaluation, and actually, the Air Force wants to make a determination by the end of fourth quarter of 2021, so they're going to reach a decision by September 30th of this year. We have to have a community support package in till the 4/34th by July 23rd. We just found out that we were being considered about mid-May. So it's been very hectic trying to put a regional community support package. This letter that I think I provided copies, hope you've had an opportunity to review it, is just adding the city of Peru under one letterhead, so the mayor, clerk treasurer, members of city council will be signing the same letter pledging your support, indicating that this community's had a history back into the 1940s of supporting a military installation in this community. So we know how to do it, and we look forward to the opportunity that the KC-46 is reporting to. So I appreciate your consideration. This will go along with a lot of other letters of support in a package to go to the Secretary of the Air Force, so.
Thank you. I make a motion that we support this letter.
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahadashini?
Yes.
And Wal?
Yes.
I know, you already said side one, but if you wouldn't mind, this is going to be original too, rather than on the backside, because if I could ask you to...
Which one? This one?
This, yeah, this is the signature page.
Okay.
And I'll get out of here. Thank you very much for your support.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number 15, 2021. This is an ordinance to vacate an east-west alley in the city of Peru. I believe it was given a favorable recommendation. Do you have something to present? Haley?
Oh, just that it was a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission from 700.
And it is on Monroe, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to consider ordinance number 15?
So moved.
Second, does anybody want to second it?
Second. I'll second it.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahadashini?
Yes.
And Wal?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have any discussion on that?
It's all grass.
Yeah, did you see it from the aerial pictures that the mayor sent us? Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 15, 2021.
A second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahadashini?
Yes.
And Wal?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number 16, 2021. This is an ordinance to vacate a developed street in the city of Peru. Does somebody want to make a motion to consider?
I'm not motion.
Somebody want to second that?
Second.
Okay. Pat made the motion. Kathleen, second. Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Closo?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahadashini?
Yes.
And Wal?
Yes.
I believe this is off Boulevard, maybe, and it got an unfavorable recommendation. Haley, do you want to report on that? Or Joe?
Sorry. Sorry for me. The Planning Commission gives an unfavorable recommendation to close this developed street. The board voted to keep this street open 700.
And the main reason they want to keep that open is because the utilities need access to that, correct?
Yeah.
For safety reasons?
Yeah. If there were to be an ice storm and they needed to get up there for any reason, they would slide right down from Logan Street and completely, like, it'd be bad. It'd just be really bad.
Okay, so it's a safety, utilities, access issue for that. So on this one, if you want to go along with the Planning Commission, you would vote no, just for the sake of confusion for everyone here on the council.
Yeah, do not vote no.
Okay, so I will make a motion to accept, not vacate it?
Yes, go ahead. You're right. Move to adopt.
Move to adopt it?
Yeah, is there be a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt it?
Second.
And then you just vote it down.
Okay.
Now.
Okay.
Who made the motion first?
I did.
That's who made the motion, Tom, second.
Anderson?
No.
Guston?
No.
Closo?
No.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
No.
Fahadashini?
No.
And Wal?
No.
Okay, next on the agenda is communications. Do we have anybody from the audience that has anything that they would like to say? Janelle?
My question is this, when we did the...
Do you want to come up to the microphone? Sorry, Janelle.
I just have a question. When we did the Juneteenth celebration out at the park, I was wondering, why is that old concession stand still there? It's an eyesore.
It is. I've been talking with some other people, also Steve Anderson and I have been together. What I personally would like to see is a bunch of volunteers come together and take the upper loft off of it and put the roof down on just one level, and then for any other events that we have up there, people can come in and do it, rent it for ice cream, pop, just like the Fourth of July. It'd been nice if one of our vendors could have set something up in there. And it's something we're, we're kind of working on, it's just, we're trying to get a bunch of volunteers together so that we could do that. So you are correct on being an eyesore.
Would they repaint it or whatever?
Oh, yeah. It would have the new roof be repainted, all the windows and doors fixed.
Yeah, it was.
It's an eyesore.
Yeah, it was a horrible looking at that thing. It's like, why is it still here? It's been here for, I don't know, how many years? I mean, since my baby was a baby, and that's been 51 years.
You're probably close.
And another question I'd like to ask, why is the parks department only have five people working? Do we just have five people in the five, in the park department?
That I am not 100% sure, but I will check into it, and I will get back with you by next week to find out how many for sure we have. Primarily, the parks job has been mowing and continuing the upgrading in the park. With that being said, also, the golf course in the park are working as one now, two. So it's not just the parks department doing stuff up there. You have people that's working on the golf course also helping in the park, and it's working out the word, saving us tax dollars to where we can make our parks nice.
Another question. I won't say who said it, but people in the parks department, do they have to work like nine months before they get a vacation, straight seven days a week?
No.
No.
I didn't...
They have to be full-time.
What?
They have to be full-time.
Well, I assume they are full-time.
Not all.
Not all, no, no.
No, we have a lot of seasonal.
We have a lot of part-time people that go, even the people that go around and mow grass for vacant buildings and stuff are part-time.
Is that part of the parks department, or is that part of the city? No?
No.
So, Janelle, you've had a couple of questions, but it sounds like you have concerns. What, I know you don't want to, what are your concerns?
Well, I was just wondering if we only have five. I understood that Wabash have 15 people. So that was my concern, that we only have five people doing the work of maybe five other people since...
So is that correct, that Mayor Susan, do we have five full-time employees in the parks department?
I don't believe there's five full-time employees.
No, most of them are seasonal.
Give me a moment, I'll bring up the wage ordinance.
I beg your pardon, I'm sorry.
He's going to break the wage ordinance.
So, most of the people work for the park department is part-time?
A lot of them are seasonal, which is a part-time position because we don't need that many in the wintertime when the parks are not being used. All of our restrooms are shut down winterized. After that particular time, then our parks department's employees are not needed on a full-time basis.
And are we on that nasty building out there? Is it any way you can get new?
New car?
New toilet facilities in the toilets, I mean, in the restrooms, because they are...
In the Conoco Park?
Mm-hmm. They look like they've been there, again, 51 years.
Cliff has been in discussion with the mayor and myself about trying to find additional money. It does take money, and the parks, parks fund is just not funded as fully as the general fund, and so...
But if you're going to use it, you would want people to go into a nice place to, they have to go to the bathroom or use the facility, because nobody wants to go into a nasty bathroom.
That's true.
The bad, the bad thing about that is, we've had issues with this vandalism, stuff and constant monitoring. We can't really put like a camera inside the bathroom.
Well, I went talking about the walls or anything like that.
Okay. Moving itself.
Yeah, it's not that anybody can vandalize those, but yeah, they can write on the walls, and that's common in most places.
And these items have been addressed. The park superintendent has been working, trying to figure out the plan, where the financing can come from, because everybody knows it all needs to be dealt with, it's just a matter of timing and money. But yes, they are definitely addressing it.
And I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, they need, they know that, they know that there is a problem, so they're trying to work on that.
To answer your question, we have the parks superintendent, assistant superintendent, those are the only two full-time parks positions. Then we have two parks operators that work 36 weeks a year, and then one additional park operator that works less hours. So that's fine.
Okay, Janelle? I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon, I talked right over you again.
No, you're fine.
We are starting to work on the budget now, so it's something which may be taken into consideration as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Janelle. Jason, do you have something?
Hi, I'm Jason Hahn. I own several properties, all of my wife Debbie's in the audience in Peru. One of them's at 400 North Broadway, across from the high school. Probably a lot of people know it, is where Dr. Frank used to be, but currently there's three businesses that operate out of there. One's a lawyer, one's a chiropractor, and one's a psychologist. And we are having a serious problem with the garage sale situation in Peru and the ordinance that really is very difficult to enforce. The ordinance today, as it's written, allows for two garage sales of a certain length, but it doesn't require any registration. So how would the city or any, any organization that's monitoring that even know that there was one, two, or 10 garage sales going on at a particular address? And I'll describe the problem. The problem is, we, we have people who operate out of that building and use the parking lot that we own and pay taxes on, and they use it various days of the week, various hours of the day, sometimes into the evening, sometimes the chiropractor will work on Saturdays. And having a neighbor who's, I guess, combative, if you will, thinking that she can use our parking lot at any time, all the time, and that we shouldn't have a problem with it, is really creating a problem for our tenants. And we have people who come in there, that come to a chiropractor, they don't want to park very far away, so we need to maintain the parking lot for their use. And, you know, basically with no registration and limited enforcement, we're kind of forced to do it ourselves and sit there all day on a, on a Friday or a Saturday and tell people that, hey, you can't park here. And they then react some appropriately and some inappropriately, unfortunately. Sometimes they leave their trash and whatnot that we have to clean up. But, you know, another problem is we have a local organization in the chamber that's now promoting, or was, they've since stopped, but promoting five different garage sale weekends per summer, which is in conflict with the ordinance, even though it's hard to enforce since it has no registration requirement. You know, and, and really using other businesses' properties to conduct these sales is not appropriate, you know, and I shouldn't be forced to sit there all day or erect a fence or whatever else would be necessary to keep these people from using the parking area. And it's, it's a privately owned parking... the parking area. And it's, it's a privately owned parking lot. I own it, I maintain it. We do. And so, you know, my problem is, is I can't seem to figure out from the city yet just exactly how we address this. And I think the best thing to do is to fix the ordinance. I think the ordinance is okay, other than it doesn't require any registration. And so if you're going to enforce it, you have to have some sort of document that says on the fifth, they had this, and the next month they had that, they've had their two at that address for that name, and therefore they can't have any more. There are fines, I understand, that can be levied, but how do you levy a fine when you can't prove whether they had one, two, or five? You know, now, we can take pictures of it, which was, we've been asked to do and we've done and submitted them to, to the city. So, so we can do that. But I mean, it's, it's really difficult when the ordinance is so vague in terms of how you document whether there was one or there wasn't one. And, you know, and then there's other places in Peru that I see, like on West Main, there's one that goes on all year long. And if I was their neighbors, I would not be happy with that. You know, it's, it's kind of an eyesore. And there's plenty of other places to sell things. I know people want to sell things, make a few bucks. You can do it on Facebook, you can do it on Craigslist, you can do it on any number of other venues beyond the two sales that are permitted per year. And, and I don't care if you charge any fee, you know, as far as I'm concerned, doesn't matter if it's one dollar, or five dollars, or zero dollars. But I do think there needs to be an amended ordinance to address doing it in a way that is documented so that if someone decides to not follow the ordinance, then there's a documentation of how many events they've had, and after that, they can be fined so that, you know, basically, we don't have a business being conducted out of a residential facility all summer long. And that's what happens. People leave their stuff out all summer, they conduct a sale every weekend. And it's, it's an eyesore, to be honest. We spend a lot of money on our property and make it look nice, you know, make sure that it's mowed, make sure the weeds are treated, all that good stuff. And then we've got next to us someone who has their stuff out all summer. They're not conducting a sale all summer, but their stuff's sitting out all summer. And I think that's probably inappropriate. And I don't know if there's an ordinance to address that. But mostly, I need to understand, how do we go about, you know, finding support and, and the right path to get this ordinance updated so that it's actually something that can be utilized and enforced?
We can have the, we can have the ordinance review committee.
Yeah, meet with the...
Do that.
Yeah.
We can. Jason, do you think, like, somebody like your neighbor that you're having issues with, do you think that she would actually come up here and get the permits? I mean, is she the kind of person that would actually come up here and get the permits so we could even track somebody like her, or?
I don't, I don't know if she would or she would not. I mean, what I can say, though, is if, if, if there's a picture of the state stamped and she didn't, then I guess then the code enforcement folks would have to take care of that as well.
That's just what I worry about. People just...
And this has been going on for a long time.
It has. It's been going on for several years. And I, I could go into chapter and verse and how nasty it's got. The police have been called and other things.
What is the address of the...
But it's not very pleasant. 400 North Broadway.
For the person that's doing the...
It's 412 North Broadway.
412.
412?
Yeah.
And did you guys...
I think we need to address that ordinance that we already have and amend changes to it that will make a difference here.
I agree.
I think, I think that's true. We do need to, but the other thing is, how are you guys going to do the, I mean, do you guys have a way to do the permitting?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
This is a zoning ordinance that he's speaking about. So it has to go through the planning commission according to state statute first, before it comes to you. I already have it on the agenda for the planning commission for this month, and I've already spoke with Jason and his wife about this. So I'm in the process of getting it amended as of late.
So you're, you're going to amend it so that it includes where they have to be, they have to get permits, or they have to be registered?
I'm not sure exactly how to amend it. I was going to see to Joe and probably Sandy here, like, within the next week. But I was in the process of getting it formally joined up and getting it amended somewhere.
And just so you know too, I think there's a bit of advertising that has to go on with that. It's not just as easy as amending, is it, Dustin? When you change an ordinance?
Well, if, if there's a fine or a penalty involved, then yes, there wouldn't have to be noticed because we'd also have to amend the penalty schedule and the fine schedule. So, and, and a little backstory, in May of 2019, the City Council passed the ordinance removing the regulation of where they paid a permit fee. There used to be a five-dollar permit fee, and if you didn't pay that, you can get fined.
We can still do the registration without the fee, though, and still implement the same...
Couldn't they, like, do a...
If I'm not mistaken, they no longer had to register for that.
Could that, do, could they do, like, a registration, like, online, like we do for other things, so that at least we know when they're doing it?
Or there might be a way to do that? I'm not completely...
So it's not hard to do it? So it could possibly be done that way?
I'm not sure. I don't know 100%. I can't tell you yes or no, really.
So I would also like to add, I had a problem with that on my street, and they took pictures, they said something to her, she went to Sandy, and because she's not a rummy sale, she's a free will donation.
I know.
She gets by with it.
See, maybe that's part of the...
So it goes on all summer long, and the trash comes out in my yard. And I fully understand where he's coming from, but it's poorly, poorly written, poorly, non-enforceable.
So that's part of the ordinance that we could maybe, is that through the ordinance, the City Council ordinance review? I'm sorry, I'm not, Haley, would that be through the City Council ordinance review, or?
For the rummy sales?
To, to help resolve Mr. Hahn's concerns and Susan's.
It would first stand commission first.
Okay.
It would have to go through the planning commission first, and then it would come to you guys to be amended.
Is it possible to...
And you're saying yes to that, Dustin?
That is true, yes.
Okay.
The planning commission have to give a recommendation, just like the alley vacation and everything, and council also votes on it.
We have the other amended ordinances that we have done in the past.
So the review board, we don't need to do anything with it?
No.
You guys are taking care of it?
Yeah.
So, sorry, I know you're right here, Mr. Hahn, but, so can, Haley, can we take care of, I mean, I, I understand Susan's concern because we discussed it over a year ago, right here?
And it's still going on.
Yeah. Can we take care of, try and address Susan's concern about free will and Mr. Hahn's, is it Hahn?
Yes.
Hahn's concern and his wife's concerns about both of them together?
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
Because she doesn't put a sticker tag on it. She just takes whatever they want to give her. And she will give it away, she said, too, so. But all rummy sales run under the same premise.
I have a question. This individual informed me last year when this situation was addressed with her and the ongoing sales, and the city code enforcement team went to her home, they fined her, and she informed me that she did not pay a fine. This is when she threatened me physically and pushed me.
Mrs. Hahn, can you come forward, please?
She informed me that she received a fine, and under no circumstances would she ever be paying a fine, and that she had that situation rectified. So the question is, in the event that an individual, and she is not the homeowner, is my understanding to begin with, receives a fine, how is that handled? Because she states she is not paying it and she's never going to. So then what becomes of this individual who continues to break the ordinance, as it's written, continues to have these sales, is physically and verbally threatening us on our own property and states that she's never going to pay these fines to begin with? Then what transpires?
We, we have to take her court and get a permanent injunction against her.
Are they two kind of different issues with something?
Didn't she shove you, you said?
Pardon me?
You told me she shoved you.
Yes, she did. And that was addressed with the local police department.
Okay.
And I was informed that because she pushed my husband and I, that because there was no video surveillance of it occurring, that it was just their word against ours, and that it was not something that could be prosecuted because, quote, "We can't prosecute heroin users in our city. How can we prosecute an instance of battery when it was one word against the other?" These are the issues we're dealing with on our own property that we own from these individuals. So how are these fines ever enforced against an individual? But she's informing me, don't worry about it. I worked it out with the city. I'm never paying that fine. You can have as many sent here as you want. I'm still doing what I want. This is my property.
I'm one of your...
The only thing is, the city ordinance is not jailable, right?
Correct.
So...
Just monetary fine.
Just, other than getting a court order from a judge telling her she had to pay and then going back and filing more paperwork to do a carnage, then that's the only way, if in fact she had received a ticket.
Well, I spoke with code enforcement and Brenda Douglas, and she informed me that she was fined last year. And the homeowner informs me, I did not pay it and I will never pay it. And just so you know, she's met her quota of sales for the year already now.
Have you called up to the city hall and let us know that?
That she's met her quota?
Yes.
Yes, I did. With pictures. Brenda gave me her personal cell phone, and I documented what happened last weekend and the weekend that happened in June, and I informed her that she's now met her quota of sales for the year. Her merchandise is still sitting out. She informed me the first weekend that I'll do it every weekend if I want to. You have no say-so. All of this on my property. So I'm assuming that this individual plans on having more sales because all the merchandise is sitting out there, creating an eyesore for the community and all of the residents, as Tom knows, who live in that neighborhood, putting up with this.
Then she needs to be written up for it, obviously. And if that doesn't rectify the issue, then we'd file for an injunction to prevent her from doing any sales on our property.
Mrs. Hahn?
On the 27th, we will have a draft of a new ordinance.
Jason?
Take care of that.
So that was our point in bringing this issue up, which is to make sure...
You can't talk...
Excuse me, this can't be done off. It's got to be, you can't have sidebars.
Tom?
Tom?
You can't have sidebar.
Tommy, you can't call people over and have private discussions in the middle of a public meeting.
So I was asking the question.
Right. You cannot do that. You have to do it in front of everyone at the meeting.
So, you know, our question is...
Do you want to ask him in front of everybody?
What is this like for us to proceed?
Do you want to ask him in front of everybody, or?
Wondered if you had a sign that said, "No parking violated will be towed."
Yes, I do. I got it from the City Street Department. It's posted.
Jason, will you come and take my card, please? I'm one of your City Council representatives. Will you give me a call and I'll come over? You can give one to your wife, too. I have extras. You can get family neighbors.
And, you know, I could address this last year. I didn't physically attend the meeting, but I drafted a letter and I sent it to several members of the City Council asking for assistance on how we are to proceed. I mean, are, are we expected to erect some type of a barrier on our property now? I spent thousands of more dollars after we've already basically redone the entire building, and then we have to go to more expense?
Give me a call. I mean, I'm not trying, but give me a call and I'll come over and we'll talk and see what we can do.
Sure.
But we have to go through.
Why don't we let the planning commission handle it?
Well, I'm their City Council representative. I can listen. So, but yes, the planning commission has to do that. But yes, but I can listen, so.
And, you know, for us to sit on our property and police our property, we do not know these individuals who are showing up for her garage sale. And to be honest, some of them have been some very nefarious individuals. So, you know, I'm sitting out there by myself all day in the heat, policing my lot, making people leave. I'm being confronted by some of these individuals. How do I know they don't have a gun with them? And there I sit by myself on my property to protect my tenant's rights to be able to use the parking lot.
So you don't live there, right?
No, it is a commercial property.
Okay. I thought for a minute, when we were talking earlier, that was your, your yard.
No.
Okay.
And this individual, as far as I know, who's having these sales, that is not her property. That is her stepfather's property, as far as we know, in his name.
Does she live there with him?
Yes, she does.
Same as her property. I know you don't want to hear that, but it is, if somebody lives in your house, even though they don't own it, they're the same as the owner of the property. But it's not falling on deaf ears. The planning commissioner's already said that he's going to be working on it, and we can...
We appreciate your time.
Give me a call, please, and I'll meet, I'll get with you, and then Haley and I can communicate, too, and it'll go through the zoning, but we'll listen. I'm happy to listen and...
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you so much.
Does anybody else from the audience have any communications? No? Anybody from the council have anything that they would like to?
I'd like to, on behalf of Robert Adams and his wife, Christie, asked if maybe they could get an answer. Who is responsible for repairing those nasty chuck holes on US-24 north of Peru?
It's US-24, NDOT.
NDOT? Okay. How do you, how do they contact them? They said, I mean, they said their, their car was just riveted. They hit one of those.
I got a number. They are awful.
Yeah.
Mr. Titt is saying it's the Fort Wayne NDOT district, so.
Just Google Fort Wayne, NDOT, Fort Wayne Division.
Okay.
Call, make as many complaints as you can.
All right. Okay, thanks.
I guess if we want to talk about potholes, let's talk about to the Parks Department. Tell them to fill in the parks when you first drive into the McConacaw Park over by the play park. Big old hole. They need to fill it in.
Just pave it. Need to pave it. Two entries to it apart.
And I would like to thank the mayor and chief hawk for working with the group trying to put on a music festival in the amphitheater in September. They've done a great job. We're trying to help get this thing off the ground, and I appreciate it.
Very cool. When is that going to be?
September 8th and 9th.
Yay. September?
Is that what it is?
Carnival.
Last time I talked to your son, he was going to do it in...
October.
October.
October, right tonight, sorry. Forgot to push in the date.
I was going to say, we talked about the September, but it's in October.
Okay, we don't have anything else? Make a motion that we adjourn.
Right, I got, I got.
And I would like to say one thing. It was brought up at the last meeting about the sign ordinances and the flags regulations. Unfortunately, there's just not anything we can do about it at this time.
I, I looked in and found exactly what you had said, and there's just really nothing to enforce. Unfortunately, there's nothing.
We are one of many communities trying to find solutions, and it all circles back to freedom of speech.
One, one other thing I do want to thank everybody for coming in and putting up with the heat tonight. This is what we've been dealing with, we'll be dealing with every day until they get our, get our air conditioner back up and running. They had to take it all apart, clean the tower and everything. I do apologize for not being in a suit and tie, but I didn't wear shorts.
Steve did.
I did.
I just, I just need two minutes, just two minutes. Dustin, when we talked about the committee having to be, you know, open door law for the future growth, so I talked with Luke Brett today, and he referred me to Indiana, to Indiana codes that could be relevant, probably are. And basically, he said, he says it's a complicated question, but then he referred me to two Indiana codes that would indeed make this an official, you know, it's, do we have charters on our committees? Because we're supposed to have charters on each committee?
If it's a council-established committee, then yeah, you would need a charter, I believe, most likely, or some type of formal creation of the committee and the parameters of that committee.
Okay, so that needs to happen, or how do we know if it's already happened?
No, don't have to. I talked with Jim Walker. He's the one that started this, and he said it was started as initially as a think tank. And he started it with members of, that were heads of the departments and a couple of members from the community, and he got volunteers from the City Council. So he appointed it.
So if this is a, a committee that was created by the mayor, no need for charter, there's no need for public access law, however, no more than three mi, members of the council can be part of the committee or attend those meetings, because then that comes...
I'll, I'll send to these Indiana codes because per Luke Brett, this would fall under that. So I don't know what we need to do at that point, but I'll, I'll forward the email to you. Is that okay?
Certainly. And I would most certainly agree that it fall under that if it was a council-created board, but because it's mayor, mayor's created board, the public access laws do not apply.
Does he remember about what year that took place in, so that we could look back at the minutes, or not just take his word for it and actually see if it was...
All I can remember is 2009 because I was on it. All I can remember is 2009, because I was on it. We did a.
Oh, you said at the last meeting that it would happen way before you were on.
I thought it did, but Jimmy reminded me that we started, he started me with this with a feel-good concert for the city.
Okay, so 2009, okay.
2009.
But then it was created.
But it was created before me.
January, when we first took office, because it was on our committees, on our committee list. We'll have to.
And just because it's on the committee list, it, it kind of serves the council members with sort of like a liaison to like the other boards. Not, they're not voting members, per se. It'd be like you and Steve on, or sorry, Pat and Steve for the utilities board. They have really no say in what goes on in that board meeting, they just relay what happens there back to the council.
I'll, I'll send to these emails and talk with Luke further, you and Luke, okay? Is that?
That's fine.
Good, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
On favor?
Bye.